For those who didn't hear me earlier today, some of you have been here right from the faithful beginning. Thank you for that so very much. I am the interim town manager. My name is Michael Griffin. I am proud to be serving the town council and the officers-elect of the town of Maryville, and all of you, they're so delighted to be serving as well. And I have to tell you, again, my apologies, I can't say them enough for the fact that we just don't have adequate chairs, but how wonderful for democracy that we have standing room only for it. So let's give yourselves a hand. I will give the introductions in a little bit to some of our distinguished guests, but forbear me, I recognize Dr. McLeod in the back, and I want to thank you for those great popcorns. Do that fundraiser again. She is the executive director of the Urban League. If the officers, the elected officers-elect are ready, we ask you to come into the room in the manner in which we discussed. Why is today important? Indiana law reads that the term of office for a municipal official in this state begins at noon, January 1st. But just because it begins at noon, that's one of the three things that has to happen to qualify a person for office. Every one of these people had to be 18 years of age at least, and a registered voter. That's it! But I'm sure that there was more than that in your consideration on the election that brought them here today. The second thing that they do have to have is a certificate of election that provides proof that after counting, a majority of the people that they hoped to serve decided they should serve, but they'll be serving everyone. The people that voted for them, the people that didn't vote for them, and even the people who couldn't vote, because we should represent children too, should we not? I think we should. And finally, they also have to have this hour, noon at January 1st. And their term goes four years following up to noon, January 1st, four years succeeding, and until an officer is elected to succeed them and qualified. So what about this oath of office? It's just a mere recital, right? Oh, no. Not to me, and not to the officers-elect that are up there waiting for the chance to continue to serve you in some cases, and serve you for the first time in others. The oath of office that they're going to take and subscribe to today has been administered to every elected official the past 52, 54 years now, in this town. You're a young town. It's the oath that every Indiana municipal official must take in order to assume the role of office, and it's not empty. You know, Article 15 of the Indiana Constitution, and Article 6 of the US Constitution requires that, an oath to uphold the US Constitution is required before they can assume office. And of course, Article 15 adds the other requirement, which is to take the oath of office for the Indiana Constitution as well. We will give a test later to see if you've read them both and know what you're doing. Just kidding. But why an oath? Oath is actually an English derivative of a Samarian word, "ankh," which literally meant "life utterance." This is no empty matter, no empty matter at all. It's a serious undertaking. And like all promises, they're more meaningful when they're public, as I shared with the officers-elect before they came in. The most important promises we ever make are the ones that we make in public, because they're the most, they're the ones for which we're the most accountable. Oaths that we take to tell the truth in a court of law. Oaths that we take during our marriage, and the oath that they're going to take today. So having standing room only is even more heartening for all of us, and makes our hearts full. Abraham Lincoln, when he took his oath of office, said that it was so important to him, he believed he had to keep the union together because the oath he took, he subscribed before God, and it was registered in heaven. Depending on the faith life of these people, maybe they feel the same way. It's only important that it be registered here, and then filed with a circuit court clerk within 30 days, under law. The ancient Scythians also took an oath. They took an oath of battle and bravery. Their oath was so severe, that if you showed any source of cowardice during the course of battle, based on that oath, you were required to fall on your own sword and eviscerate yourself for failing to be courageous. You will be happy to know, officers-elect, that none of you will be asked to do that at all. We have since abandoned that as a concept in our law, but you may feel like it sometimes, because keeping your oath is no small matter. We thank you for being willing to make one before us this day. The oath of office reminds them that they are participating in a government that believes in the rule of law. Now, that doesn't mean that they can't have passions about policy that they're going to want to bring before you, and that they're going to have debates, but it will be with respect, and it will be according to the dictates of the rule of law. And if a majority of the council decides to do something, that will be policy for this community. And one of the things I like most about the oath, not because the language is pretty, the recital is actually more prose than poetry, but like so much that we do in public life, and even private life, we measure them quantitatively. Is that the cheapest cost? Is that the highest value? Did we pay the least possible for the highest amount of quality? But here, we have a qualitative measure. These officers-elect, when they take their oath, will include the language that says that whatever they've just sworn to, they're going to do to the best of their ability. Not good for the day, not better than the rest, but to the best of their ability. That's no small matter. That's a superlative for any English teachers out here, I'm showing off for you. That is a superlative degree, is it not? So, this is an important undertaking for this office and this council, the 14th in the history of the town of Maryville, to be established. I've concluded my remarks, and now I'd like the program to formally begin by, do we have a member of clergy here? Okay, we're going to ask that you allow a prayer to be offered, an invocation this day, and then during the course of the actual meeting, we will do the pledge. Please.
Let's pray. O God, our Father, we bow before you at this very important moment to thank you, first of all, for who you are in our lives, and to thank you, Lord, for your grace and your mercy. And Father, you as the great administrator of the universe, you've taught us things. So Father, our prayers today are not just for ourselves, but for these men and women who stand before this august body today, to take an oath, Father, that will bind them to this responsibility. Father, we pray for strength, courage, insight, wisdom, knowledge, and ability to fulfill the offices for which they have assumed. Father, again, we thank you for this community. We pray for your blessings upon this community, upon those who serve to protect, upon those who serve to just make life better, our educators. Father, we pray for our children, that all will grow in the wisdom and the grace of Jesus. We thank you, in his name. Amen.
One last matter. Article 1, Section 8 of the Indiana Constitution provides that "the mode of administering any oath of office under it shall be in the manner most consistent with and binding upon the conscience of the person." You should be listening to this part. Therefore, they have the choice to either affirm their oath, or to swear their oath today, and that's a choice that they can make. So having said that, I'd like to introduce, please, her honor, Judge Gina Jones of the Lake Superior Court. And let me introduce her a little bit as she comes up. Judge Jones is coming back home a little bit. She was the second town judge in the history of the town of Maryville since they established the court. Judge Jones is a graduate of Indiana University in Bloomington, studying in the School of Public and Environmental Affairs, where she did public management, yes! Just a little shout-out there for our fellow speons. But she also attended Valparaiso Law School, where she earned her JD. Shortly thereafter, the practice of law for a time, she became the second town judge in the history, and then Governor, I think it was Holcomb, I'm trying to do this from memory.
You're doing great.
Thank you. Governor Holcomb elevated her to a vacancy in the Lake Superior Court, where she served for a time in the Civil Division, and she's now in the big-time Criminal Division. Let's pray for her too, for that. Under Indiana law, judges are empowered to administer oaths of office, and we thought it would be especially important to bring back one of our alum to do this for us. So your honor, I'm going to present the microphone to you. I do have the certificates of election, and I will hand them to you, we're going to do them in Ward O, if that's acceptable to you. Very well. She didn't want to be okay, she's just as much a judge, by the way, without it, but she looks more judicial with it, I think. I want to recognize a few people while we're waiting for this, this is a big deal. So, I do know that David Uselak is here, he's a past member of our town council, as well as a past employee of the town court. Mr. Uselak, say hi, wave your hands. Andrew Silvestowitz is here, he's also a past member of the Maryville Town Council. Please celebrate him, there he is. And I've already introduced you to Dr. Vanessa McLeod, who is the executive director of the Urban League, we're really proud that she's here today. We also have the immediate past Clerk Treasurer of the town of Maryville, her honor. I want to make sure I say this, Kelly White Gibson. And we also have immediately passed council member from Ward 2, Councilman Richard Hardaway. Have I forgotten anybody? I apologize if I've missed you. There is one more I want to say. Yes, I haven't forgotten him, I was going to do him last as the party chair, because that's what I read in my etiquette book today. Yes. So, I wanted to get all the officers-elect or the past elected officials first, and now I want to introduce also, we're very honored to have the Chairman of the Lake County Democratic Central Committee, James L. Weiser, Attorney-at-Law. Mr. Weiser, just say, let's see if I can say hi. We thank you all for being here, we thank you all so much. Say again? Oh, I beg your pardon, is Mr.? The, I'm sorry, give me your last name again, sir. Mr. Blackman. Eric Blackman, the Township Trustee of Ross Township. Thank you, Mr. Blackman, I'm proud that you're here, I apologize. Thank you. Thank you very much. Your Honor? Curtis Pearson. Thank you. Mr. Pearson, you're supposed to raise your hand and let me know I forgot you, I did not mean to do that, thank you. Anyone else? Ryan Dudley. Ryan Dudley there, thank you. Anyone else? I'm sure you did it better before this, I'm sure. Now I'm going to hand the microphone over to her honor, and I have the certificates of election, so if you'll call him up if you do.
Okay, I'm used to having something in front of me, so I'm going to just kind of fudge this a little bit. When I was asked to do this, it's such an honor to be back here. It wasn't the first bench that I sat on, I happened to be in Hammond for a couple years first, I mean, a couple months in between some judges, and, but when I came to Maryville, I learned everything here. And although, hmm, you were here, and, you were here, a couple of you were here, I just wanted to say thank you for even thinking to invite me back. Public service is why we're all here, we're here to serve the public. Each of you are leaders in this community, in deciding what servant leadership looks like. I want you to consider this. This is so odd, can I please stand over there? Because I'm like, they're back to me, this is, this is just really not making me comfortable. All right, I can do this, this way. You all are just going to have to get my back. All right. The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy. The true neighbor will risk his position, his prestige, and even his life for the welfare of others. Dr. Martin Luther King said that. I mention that because serving the public is not for everyone. It is not always rainbows and butterflies. Each of you are here not on your own, but because a greater number of people believed in you to serve and speak for them in their times of need. You are that true neighbor that Dr. King was speaking of. So before you speak this oath, and know that you are not just speaking the words, but you are taking their meaning, and that you will swear or affirm to uphold that definition, I will leave you with one last MLK quote that service to mankind is based on. "We must use time creatively in the knowledge that the time is always right to do right." That's what I live by, so I hope that you can do the same. All right, now we can do the oaths.
Your Honor, the first member as councilwoman-elect, Rhonda Neal, from the first ward of Maryville.
Do you have someone to come with you, to stand with you? Did we ever find the Bible, or no, are we not doing that? You can have, yeah, absolutely. You could, just, just one. Husband? See, normally, he would hold the Bible, you would put your hand on it, and raise the right hand. All right, that's okay. Write the word "Bible" on it, on that, yes. Because you have to raise your right hand. So raise your right hand, all right. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Indiana and that I will faithfully impartially and diligently discharge the duties of the office of Maryville Town Council Member, Ward 1 according to the law and to the best of my ability. You are sworn, thank you. And next, we have Ward 2. Do you have someone to stand with you? All right, husband, come on up. Raise your right hand. Make sure. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Indiana and that I will faithfully impartially and diligently discharge the duties of the office of Maryville Town Council Member, Ward 2 according to the law and to the best of my ability. You are sworn, thank you. And Ward 3, Leona Chandler Felton. So I have a message for you, apparently you went to high school with my aunt, and she, it was on Facebook, and she's in Texas, Elaine Taylor? So she called me and said to tell you hello. And congratulations. Do you have someone to stand? And if you would raise your right hand. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Indiana and that I will faithfully impartially and diligently discharge the duties of the office of Ward 3. Maryville Town Council Member Ward 3 according to the law and to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Ms. Margaret Uselak? Is someone coming to stand with Ms. Uselak?
From our Councilman David E. Clark.
Yes. You were here when I was a prosecutor here. Ooh, that's a long time ago. All right, raise your right hand, all right. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Indiana and that I will faithfully impartially and diligently discharge the duties of the office of Maryville Town Council Member, Ward 4 according to the law and to the best of my ability. Thank you. It's closer over there. And Mr. Bella, Rick Bella. Do you have someone to stand with you? Oh. Right hand. All right. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Indiana and that I will faithfully impartially and diligently discharge the duties of the office of Maryville Town Council Member, Ward 5 according to the law and to the best of my ability. Thank you. And Mr. Sean Pettit. We go way, way, way back.
Way back. Twenty-four, twenty-eight years. So far, actually.
Say your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Indiana and that I will faithfully impartially and diligently discharge the duties of the office of Maryville Town Council Member, Ward 6 according to law and the best of my ability. You are sworn, congratulations. Hisha Hardaway? Absolutely. Don't start about how long, okay? All right, she, she can't hug you, you've got to hold the right hand up. I'm being so bossy. All right, you ready? Got it, all right. I, say your name.
Hisha Monique Hardaway. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Indiana and that I will faithfully impartially and diligently discharge the duties of the office of Maryville Town Council Member, Ward 7 according to law and to the best of my ability. And to the best of my ability, so help me God.
All right, Mr. Clerk Treasurer. Eric O'Neal, January. All right, ready? Right hand. Okay, here we go. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Indiana and that I will faithfully impartially and diligently discharge the duties of the office of Maryville Town Clerk Treasurer according to the law and to the best of my ability. All right, sir, you're up. All right, you ready? She's going to hold you to this oath, okay? You ready? I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Indiana and that I will faithfully impartially and honestly discharge the duties of the office of Judge of the Maryville Town Court according to the law and to the best of my ability so help be God. Congratulations to all of you.
You have to sign all those. You all now, it's past noon, so you are officially elected officials of the town of Maryville. Congratulations.
Mr. Grifey, can you have them, sign them, so I can then sign?
I will, I'll hand them to them now, if that's all right? If there's no objection, we'll get this issued, so that each of you can sign these off, and we can have her honor sign them, because that's important. On the very top. On the very top. On the very top. And Ward Three, on the very, I think this is you, Ward Three, yes?
Yes.
On the very top. The configuration may look unusual to you. Indiana law provides that the term of office for a town council president cannot be longer than the term of office of the underlying membership on the council. So while the current town, excuse me, the former town council president was reelected, at noon, that office became vacant. So the first business in order today is to organize themselves under the Indiana law. And because there is no chair, and we've adopted in our ordinance, Robert's rules, as well as there's some express provisions to this end, the Clerk Treasurer will call this meeting to order as acting chair for the purpose solely of electing a council president. Do you have a pro temp or you're ready to go? Do you need anybody to call your role to establish a quorum?
I will let you act as the.
I will do that, sir. I've laid some sheets up here. So, acting chair, you may call the meeting to order, I believe, right?
Colors?
Oh, I beg your pardon. Yes, the color guard has to come in, I beg your pardon. We ask now that the color guard representing the fire departments of our area, as well as our fire territory, assemble and present the colors. If you wish to rise, you may. Acting Chair, by operation of the agenda agreed upon, the Chief of Police in the town of Maryville will lead us into pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All may be seated. Mr. Acting Chair, with your permission, I will call the roll.
Sure.
Counselor Neal.
Here.
Counselor Hayes Edwards.
Here.
Counselor Chandler Felton.
Here.
Counselor Uselak.
Here.
Counselor Bella.
Here.
Counselor Pettit.
Here.
Counselor Hardaway.
Here.
Chair, there are seven members present. And a quorum is established.
Quorum is established. All right. So, welcome, and I call this quadrennial meeting of the Maryville Town Council to order. I asked that the clerk, well, we just did the roll call, excuse me, I'm new. Having seven of seven members present, a quorum is attained for the meeting. The first order of business is the election of the town president. The chair will receive nominations. Each. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk Treasurer. I got it, go ahead. Sure. Each counselor who wished to offer a nomination for a motion should say, "Mr. Chair," in parliamentary parlance, "in this role, you are, I'm a temporary chair. I nominate, I nominate." Nominations don't require a second, but if a counselor wants seconds, don't, well, I'm reading too much.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I nominate Rick Bella for President of the town, Maryville Town Council.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations?
No.
All right. As many are in favor of the nomination, I close the nominations recorded, we have to record a vote. So, are there any votes? I guess we got a vote.
With your permission, Mr. Acting Chair, if you wish, I could do a roll call for you or you could do it by voice vote. Either way, it would be acceptable, given there's only one nominee.
All right, let's do a roll call.
All right, with your permission, for the election, closing of nominations and electing Rick Bella to be president, Counselor Neal. Yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Hayes Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Chandler Felton.
Yes.
Counselor Uselak.
Yes.
Counselor Bella.
Yes.
Counselor Pettit.
Yes.
Counselor Hardaway.
Yes.
As Acting Chair, there are seven yeses and no nos.
All right.
He is now the president.
Okay, Rick Bella is now the president.
Thank you, Eric.
All right.
Thank you, Eric, good job for your first time. It's my pleasure to now open the floor for nominations of the town council vice president for 2024.
Mr. President, I nominate Rhonda Neal.
Mr. Pettit nominates Rhonda Neal. Are there any other nominations?
No.
Are there any other nominations?
No.
Hearing none, I will accept a motion to close nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for Mrs. Neal for vice president.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, congratulations. So I want to thank everyone for coming today. We are going to have some refreshments after the meeting, but at this time, I'd like to turn the microphone over to each counselor to say a couple comments or closing remarks, whatever they would like to, so, Vice President Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. Thank you all for all coming out and attending. I am excited about these next four years. We're looking forward to working together and to unify as one for the good of our community. And we're looking for all of you guys' support in doing that also. Thank you.
Counselor Hayes Edwards.
Good afternoon, Happy New Year, Happy Monday. I want to just personally thank everyone who did vote for me, who did come out and vote, period. In general, we need to continue to get our voting numbers up. We thank you, the town of Maryville, as Vice President Neal said, for being here, and we look forward to working with you, together we can.
Counselor Chandler Felton.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for being here. I am so excited about this possibility and the possibilities of things that can happen in the town of Maryville. That was one of my main reasons for wanting to come out and be a public servant, because that's what I've done basically all my career. But thank you for coming, and please come out to the council meetings and get involved with your community. Thank you so much.
Counselor Mrs. Uselak.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank everybody that showed here today for your encouragement and to show that you have faith in us. I will continue to do my duties as the councilwoman of the Fourth Ward. I'm going into my ninth year, and I appreciate everybody that voted for me, and I will continue to do my duties in the Fourth Ward, and Happy New Year to everybody.
Yes. Counselor Pettit.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is my 21st year on the council. I also want to thank everyone for coming out, and I especially want to thank the residents of Ward Six, who have reelected me time after time. I hope I continue to do the job that they're satisfied with. It's been a long run. I started, for those of you that don't know, I was town manager for two years, and before that, I was planning and building administrator. So I started under Mr. Bella back in 1997 with the town. So, coming up on 30 years of service, my wife and I have made this our home. I've tried to do what's right for the town, continue to work on the Radisson property. If I had a dollar for every time I was asked about the Radisson property, I could pay for my daughter's college at trying. But we have the Century Plaza, we have the future of Andrean High School. Roads and drainage are still a major concern here in town, which the seven of us will all work on. We have an excellent staff. I can't speak highly enough about our department heads, our police officers, our firefighters. We are the largest town in Indiana, and it's a great place to live and work, so thank you very much for your support.
Counselor Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, Mr. Pettit said it all, so I will just say, thank you, everyone, for coming out today. Thank you to the residents of Ward Seven. Thank you for everyone who came out to vote. This town is great, and I look forward to working for and with everyone. So Happy New Year.
And our new Clerk Treasurer, Eric January.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really want to thank the entire town of Maryville.
That's okay.
This was a.
You have friends and family here, it's all good.
Right, so this is a hard fought battle, and I just really thank everybody that voted for me.
Yes, yes, yes.
Most of y'all voted for me because of my professional background and what I'm bringing to the table. I look forward to working with everybody on this council to make the town of Maryville one of the most tax efficient places in northwest Indiana, in the state of Indiana, the Midwest. I want us to be an example that other towns have a, that can follow. I'm not a politician, but I've been elected to a political position, and I will uphold and do everything that I said I'm gonna do. Transparency and accountability, welcome to Maryville. And I just really, really want to thank everybody that came out and supported me, Curtis Pearson, I mean, every, my mother, both my mothers that are here, my father, Albert, for everything that you've done to help me become the man that I'm becoming, that I am. And, but I just really want to thank you, and I look forward to working for you. If you have any questions, I've got a very competent staff, you can always reach out to me, and I'm gonna do, just like we did when I played college football, whatever it takes, legally, to do the right thing for the town of Maryville.
Thank you. I do want to pass on to the council, a town of Maryville pin. It's a pin I hope you wear proudly, and not just wear it to meetings, but to wear it everywhere you go, because this job is 24/7. So I know Mrs. Uselak and Mr. Pettit and myself can speak to that, having experienced it, but this job is constant, and I know you all really care, and so wear this proudly, and it'll entice people to mention or talk to you and ask questions, so please do that and enjoy it. Pettit, now go into your collection.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You okay? Judge, I have one for you. I missed you sitting down there. Again, thank you all for your indulgence going through this ceremony, and we do invite you all to stay and have some refreshments with us and some fellowship. And Jean, Jean, would you like to say something? I'm sorry, I forgot his pin, I forgot him to speak. Judge Velasco.
Not unusual. I want to thank everybody who's present today and all those people that voted for supporting the court. I really appreciate your support, and I promise you that I will keep after it, like I swore to do, and if anybody ever has any questions, please feel free to consult with me or my staff. We're here to help the town. Appreciate, like I said, the support of everyone, and thank you very much for attending today. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you all.